Okay, we're ready. This regular meeting of the Board of Education for October 16th, 2018 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all regular board meetings. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. And can you just, okay, she's over here. We also have interpreters here this evening, and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they will be interpreting into, and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance. Please use the standing microphone.
Hola, hola y muy buenas tardes. Me llamo Daniel y voy a estar ofreciendo servicios de interpretación en español para el público que precisa esa ayuda. Muchas gracias.
Dalla ha, o yo, yo soy un traductor de español. Si hay alguien que necesita ayuda, por favor, llame a mi.
Hola, hola y muchas gracias.
Good evening, my name is Dao Dong, I'm Spanish Vietnamese. Xin chào, tôi nói tiếng Việt. Nếu cần sẽ giúp đỡ về tiếng Việt, xin vui lòng tìm tôi ở cuối kia. Cảm ơn.
Thank you. I'd like to provide a quick overview of the business the board will be conducting tonight. We'll begin with student and public comment, followed by the superintendent's report, and then receive a quarterly report on the implementation of the recommendations from the investigation of the Mitch Whitehurst incidents. Immediately following this meeting, we'll have a work session on the visioning process in the Mazama Conference Room. Board members, are there any items in the business agenda that you have questions on?
I'll have some questions, but I'm not asking for a separate vote.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So, let's move right into student and public comments. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for student? Oh, sorry. Ms. Powell? Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, for students, we have Gabby Cozy and Fozia Ibrahim.
And as folks make their way to the table, I'd like to review the guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen with electronic devices turned off and without distractions from paper. Board members will not, and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but the board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. If you would like us to respond, please contact Ms. Powell. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have any additional materials, please give them to Ms. Powell and she'll distribute them to us. So you have three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time.
Hi, thank you all for having us here tonight. My name is Gabrielle Cozy, last name spelled C-O-S-E-Y. I am here on the behalf of the Third Annual What Now Planning Committee and also as a Lincoln High School student.
Hi, my name is Fozia Ibrahim. I-B-R-A-H-I-M. I'm a senior at Madison High School.
So this year, the Third Annual What Now event will be held on November 17th. This year's theme is focusing around how youth are leading and innovating our democracy and challenging and expanding the traditional norms of American democracy. The event will be featuring youth-led workshops and youth keynote speakers. We're here today to extend an invitation to all members of the PPS board and all members of the PPS staff to come and join us for the event. All the workshops at the event will be equity-centric in nature, meaning that underrepresented voices will be heard and highlighted throughout the day. Topics will range from racial justice to gun violence prevention to indigenous rights to climate change to sexual assault to LGBTQ rights to students' rights and more. I would encourage you to bring your family and friends to the event to witness the incredible youth social justice activists in our community that I am utterly humbled to be able to work with to plan this event. It is an event that is incredibly important because we are going to have the opportunity to listen to the emerging voices of our community and gain a unique perspective on social issue topics of this time. We will also have specific pathways to get involved and to make a tangible difference. I think this combination of things is a rarity, and so I believe every single person should jump at the chance to partake in this event. Again, the event will be held on November 17th. Doors will open at 10:00 a.m. and the event officially commences at 11:00 a.m. We're looking to have the event at one of the local high schools, and we'll have the location on lockdown very soon. If you're interested, please go to whatnoworgan.org for any more updates, and I hope to see you all there. The event is free.
Thank you for the invitation. Thank you.
Next we have Allison Groome and David Morrison.
Hi. Hi, my name is Allison Groome, G-R-O-O-M. I am a third grader from Access Academy, and I need your help getting more girls into third grade. There are only eight girls in total, four in each class. There are two third grade classes. There are fewer reasons I think Access would be a great program for girls who need it. The way the teachers at Access teach really gets our brains working. It challenges us to work hard and learn more. The program helps individual kids learn new things at just the right level for them. Not only does Access provide special academics, but it is also a very good program to make friends in. There are a bunch of social activities that we do throughout the year. The teachers help us learn life skills that help us make strong friendships. I've done a bit of math and I figured out that there are about 2,000 third grade girls in all the schools in the district. It seems to me that there would be a lot more than eight third grade girls that need a program like Access. I'm here tonight to ask for your help to make Access available to more girls who need a program like Access. Will you help? I'd like to have more girls in Access. I'd like to have more girls have this opportunity, and I'd like to have more girls in my class to make friends with. Nothing against the boys, but you get that I'd like more girls in third grade. If any third grade girls are listening, I'd love to have you here in Access third grade. Thank you for listening and thank you for your help.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next we have Tajee Chesomet and Deb Mayer. Garrett Ingram and Beth Blumklotz.
Hi, I'm Beth Blumklotz. Good evening, good to see you. And I am a Portland Public School Special Education School Bus Driver. And we came here tonight because we wanted to thank you for riding along, and we really appreciate you showing up and doing what you said you would do. Thank you, Julia, also for coming. We do appreciate the time that you guys both took. We have come here so many times with concerns, complaints, and criticisms, and so this is our only avenue to have one-on-one with you guys as a group, and so we feel like this is only right to come back and publicly also say thank you. And I just really appreciate that you came in at the check-in time. I wanted to say hello and introduce you to everybody, but I actually was homesick that day, so I apologize for missing it. I heard wonderful things about you, that you interacted with the students well, so you get a good grade for that. And that you participated with the pre-trip, which is basically making sure the bus operates correctly. You're having to walk around inside and out and make sure all the equipment is there and everything is functioning. And so you participated, and I'm sorry, Superintendent Guerrero, so everybody knows who I'm talking about specifically, picked up students for both schools with the driver, and his first name is Jeff, and he's a wonderful, wonderful driver, and took them to the school. And there's one particular school that I also go to, and there are two students who thump on the wall or the windows the entire ride. And so Superintendent, I know you got to, you know, witness that and be a part of that. And anyone who is a parent can get, you know, a little bit impatient after a while when the kids are not following directions and making a lot of noise. Well, these two students, they make those noises non-stop. And so, but Jeff is wonderful as a driver. He understands that that's part of their IEP, that's why they're on the bus, they don't have any self-control that they can do to keep still the entire time. And they're literally the whole time. And so when I arrive to that same school in the morning, I can hear that with my windows up, and I'm sitting there waiting to drop off my students at that school. So Jeff is amazing, and he sits there the whole time. So you got to witness that. That is what we would maybe describe as an easy route, but the more difficult of the easy. So you can just imagine if you were on a more active route, it would take more physical time and so forth. So this is the good news. We're very, very excited, and I promise you, I had no intention of any down news, but Jeff actually, today was his last day. He actually, just a few sentences, I promise. Today was his last day, and he had, he just, it was just too much after a while, but you had personal conversation with him, and he is an excellent driver. So we have, last year, we have 19 drivers who did not return this school year, and a few are because of retirement. So I will say that. And then so far this year, we have six who have left for other opportunities. So we just continue, we'd like to continue to work with you to keep the drivers and have really excellent drivers here who love doing what we do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Mark Fromuth.
Good evening, my name is Mark Fromuth. The last name is spelled F S N Frank, R-O-M-U-T-H. I'm the parent of Charles Fromuth, a senior at Alliance High School at MECE, and I'm here tonight to state my wholehearted endorsement of MECE's academic and life skills teaching. Before coming to MECE, my son Charles was at Grant High School, a good school, but not the right fit for him. He became lost in the vastness of the school and was on a path to dropping out. Academically, he was suffering, and this, in combination with his choice of extracurricular activities, did not create much upward pressure on his GPA. Through the intervention of my wonderful sister-in-law, Laura Ross, a Spanish teacher at MECE, my wife and I came to know the school, and we decided, along with Charles, to have him enroll. From the time he walked into the school, he was embraced for who he was and was given positive enabling direction, excuse me, positive enabling direction. There are a number of excellent programs at MECE that provide students with the opportunity to succeed. My son was one of those students. Academically, his GPA has risen from below 2.0 to 4.0, and the technical skills provided by MECE in classes like automotive and manufacturing enabled him to obtain a paid internship this last summer at Donwood Trucks here in Portland. Finally, a few weeks ago, when school board members came to MECE, Charles participated in a student panel and told the board members that going to MECE was the best decision of his life. His mother and I believe that. I applaud the school teachers, the leadership, and the board for supporting MECE's ongoing success with physical space and capital. This school makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Moore, I have forgotten one speaker, Grace Groome.
Hello, my name is Grace Groome, G-R-O-O-M, and I'm here tonight to again ask for your support for the students served at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. K-5 School. PPS Board made a resolution on November 14th of last year, Resolution 5534, to set the feeder patterns and attendance areas for Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights Middle Schools. Included in this resolution is the commitment from this board that was, is as follows. Prior to December 31st, 2018, PPS will develop options for increasing enrollment at King K-5 in order to create two robust neighborhood non-immersion strands. And it continues. The Board directs the superintendent to take all necessary steps to implement this resolution, including developing options for boosting King's K-5 enrollment. At the November 14th meeting, Director Bailey stressed his belief that the original resolution, which included a slight boundary shift from Saban to Martin Luther King Jr., that would have resulted in increasing one strand per grade per year, starting with kindergarten, was, in his words, "too slow." By the way, this slight boundary change may have avoided the overcrowding at kindergarteners in Saban this year that we experienced. Director Bailey further explained that the single strands in the neighborhood program at MLK needed to be addressed sooner than later. So it's a year later now. Martin Luther King still has the smallest K-5 boundary in the district, and even if the school captured all of the students living in its catchment area, it would still be under-enrolled. I'm very thankful for the attention the board members have given this issue in the past, but the problem persists and continues to hurt children. For example, we have a second grade, one neighborhood strand, second grade with 28 second graders. Seven of them have IEPs, nine of them are English language learners, and three-fourths of that class is performing below grade level on the MAP test recently taken. All of this with just one teacher to serve all those needs. So I don't have all the answers, but I do have three important questions for you to consider. Number one, will you follow through on the commitment to directing staff to present options for limiting single strands at Dr. Martin Luther King by this December? Number two, who will be in charge of developing the plan? And number three, what's your plan for engaging the school community as the plan is developed to ensure that there's nothing created about them without them? Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you all again for your comments, and we appreciate hearing from all of you. So, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Guerrero?
Good evening, directors. I'm going to be brief tonight, but I do want to speak to one really critical, critically important topic, because I know it's on all of our minds, and we've had a number of recent incidents here in PPS, but I know they're happening around the state and around the country, and that's around the issue of student safety. So while our core mission is teaching and learning the safety of our students and staff is, has to be our primary and highest responsibility and priority, and this is everybody's job. We have to be vigilant in our schools, in our classrooms, on the playground, before school, after school. But the recent incidents are really underlining the importance of making sure that that stays at the top of the list. And it really goes beyond sort of the everyday work that our classroom teachers do to create that positive climate and atmosphere in their rooms, the work that our schools do to make sure they're welcoming and safe environments, but it extends to the work that our counselors do, for instance, or our bus drivers. Thank you, I loved my bus trip and spending the day with Jeff. It's making sure your vehicle is safe and the students are transported to their schools. And I just wanted to share out, you know, things that I know, we're all aware, we're in the middle of towards this end. Last week in work session, we talked about an important and critical MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the Portland Police Bureau to work on enhancing our school resource officer's presence full-time in all of our high school clusters available to all of our schools. For instance, I look forward to wrapping that up. We, our voters, set aside $5 million in the 2017 bond to make sure the entries to our buildings were equipped with cameras and intercoms and signage. That's ongoing work that's happening right now. We know that our board is considering a new policy that clearly outlines professional conduct and boundaries between adults and students, for instance. Related to that, staff have already begun training our school leaders and others around a correct and proper sexual incident response, for instance. Later today, you're going to hear, presented by our Chief of Staff, more details around the work that has been occurring in regards to the implementation of recommendations from the Whitehurst investigation. So we're going to hear about that topic tonight, for instance. So, I just want to highlight that, that we don't go through our school day in a system this large when we hear reports, small and large, to make sure we're addressing those in a thoughtful way. It's something that's very important to us. So in the interest of being prepared for emergencies and making sure we're doing and conducting safety drills, this Thursday is the Great Oregon Shakeout. It's a big tradition. Most of our schools are going to be participating in this earthquake drill at exactly 10:18 a.m. this Thursday morning. So while we're drilling for safety, we're also going to continue retrofitting our buildings to make them safer, seismically prepared, and using our funds, and that's going to be ongoing work. So just wanted to do a little commercial there on school safety and the shakeout. And the last time we had our regular meeting, it was sort of an anniversary occasion, and I didn't know we were going to have some folks following me out and about, and they've put together a little compilation, which, if you'll indulge me, we'll watch a little two-minute video here.
Can't think of higher praise, and I'm thrilled that Guadalupe Guerrero will be our next leader in Portland schools. And with that, I'd like to introduce our next leader, Guadalupe Guerrero.
And I think a year ago today, when we had that press conference in the Garden at Saban, knew that this would be a challenge, and I think everybody recognized that. With a newly-elected board and a reaffirmation around beginning to set the stage for the work ahead, it included a few elements, which I think we've been successful in accomplishing. One of those is the recruitment and hire of a new leadership team, an entirely new leadership team.
Bring it in, bring it in.
The board wanted to execute on a commitment to the community around the opening of two new comprehensive middle schools. Tubman School we're sitting in now, at Roseway Heights, given a goal to make sure that more of our middle-grade students had a comprehensive experience. There was an existing inequity around what students had access to. It was a heavy lift, and from board vote to opening the doors, you know, that was a matter of eight or nine months to go about wrapping up the construction, the programmatic development, deal with hiccups along the way, like environmental concerns at Tubman, which we were able to mediate for. We nonetheless opened the door on the first day of school a month ago. We have brilliant students, and our adults are committed to serving them. I would say what keeps me motivated is seeing our teachers energized to receive our students in the mornings. It's seeing our principals when they're gathered, optimistic about our agenda. It's seeing families dropping off their young students with smiles on their face, with the sense that, my kid's going to have a good day. It's seeing all elements of the school system kind of working in choreography around our core mission, whether it's our bus drivers or it's nutrition, everybody kind of working in sync. It's a good thing that I enjoy a challenge, because as I reflect on this past year, I think there's been a lot of growth, and I think we've learned a lot as a school system. It's definitely been a lot of hard work, and that's okay. When I first came aboard, I talked about the need for all of us to remain optimistic about the possibilities, and I remain feeling optimistic about where PPS is headed.
You know what's here? That's the best job description anybody's given me.
Well, there you go. We can make this a great school system, you know? Our youth say it all, so thank you, everybody.
So before we move on to the next item, I was just informed that we're having issues with the YouTube live feed. So it will be, they're continuing to record. It will be posted on YouTube as soon as, as soon as we finish, I guess. So, okay, sorry about that. Okay. So, next we're going to move on to the quarterly report on the implementation of recommendations from the Whitehurst report.
Good evening, board members. I'm Stephanie Soden, Chief of Staff, and Superintendent Guerrero charged me with leading an implementation team. This is in response to the Whitehurst recommendations and report. I, in no way do this work on my own. There's a large team of us, two of which are next to me, that I have asked to sort of expand on some of the items I'm going to report on. But just as introduction, this is the second quarterly update to the board on the implementation report. So last May, the board accepted a report and recommendations resulting from an investigation into sexual misconduct by a former employee and the follow-up, or lack thereof, by district staff. So these recommendations include a variety of action steps to prevent incidences like those in the report from occurring in the future, and include, but are not limited to, enhanced and ongoing training for staff, contractors, and volunteers, clear incidents tracking, reporting, and response protocols, consistent investigatory practices and outcomes, and strengthened laws and policies. So this team reported to you in July as the first quarterly update. Today's the second update. So I thought, you have in front of you a staff report that includes the 17 recommendations and some deadlines we had assigned back in the summer, and status reports on each of those recommendations. I'm not going to walk through them today, but I did want to point out some highlights. In particular, what we've been working on in the short term has been training. Our number one priority is to have every building have a trained staff person and also identify a school compliance officer, and trainings around that have occurred in August and October. We're asking all of the PPS staff, actually, we're requiring all of their PPS staff to go through online training by the end of this month. And any staff that are in contact with students, such as counselors, nutrition services, transportation, they are all going through the sexual incident response coordination or CIRC training that the superintendent mentioned. We are developing with a serious sense of urgency, training content for our contractors and volunteers as well. We expect that to be fully in place by the end of the calendar year. So another key area we've been working on is legislation, and I'm going to ask Courtney to walk through that in a moment. But just to highlight other areas before we get back to Courtney, there are also policies that were recommended we update, and the professional conduct policy, one that you're all aware of. You first read it on October 2nd. It was discussed in the Policy and Governance Committee today, and we expect it to come back. back to that committee at its next meeting in November. We're also embarking on the revision of the field trip policy, and that will be, that will come back before the committee in November as well. We have selected a vendor to track and help us report incidences in a consistent manner. That vendor is undergoing testing protocols, and we expect that to be completed next month. So, that will help us have one-stop reporting and accessibility. And then finally, education and outreach is a big focus of the recommendations, and we do have some website content that needs to be updated. It's, it needs to be posted. It's been updated based on best practices. Other school district websites that do a really good job communicating, reporting, and what happens in these incidences, so those will be up by the end of the month. We have really, Alisa Shore is our interim Title IX Coordinator, an important person on our team. She just, in the, supporting what the superintendent said, we have had a lot of safety issues arise just in this school year alone, and Alisa finds herself working with building administrators, teachers, staff, counselors in all of our high schools. So, I think we have a pretty good presence and identification stickers, posters in schools, but we're continuing to monitor that. I guess that's all I would say in those areas. And I'm happy to answer any questions before we turn to legislation. I also have Mary Kane with me, who's been really integral in developing the training. And there's the rest of the team who can answer other questions.
Do you want us to wait? Go ahead. Why don't you do it now? If you have...
I have questions. Thank you for the overview and all the work that's happened to date. So, just a couple of questions on the report. Under the very first, the training, which is really important, on the second page, it says, "Training for Nutrition Services, Facilities, and Maintenance, and Perhaps Transportation Staff." I'm wondering sort of what the perhaps is about, or...
Oh, well...
It's related to the date.
It's related to the date and not to the expectation. One of the things we're looking at is, for those union employees, we have to be very careful of providing time within the CBA, and so, we're looking to do that.
It's fine. I just made it sound like it was perhaps we're going to do transportation staff.
Ah, maybe we'll do it.
Okay, so they're going to get it, it just may not be on October 29th.
And with some groups, and I think that with, we've changed things around a bit, the facilities and maintenance, given their schedules, because they work very early in the morning and late at night, we're going to individualize the training for them so that we can best meet their needs as well.
So, I did another question, that the second recommendation was, use a specialized, trained investigator who has expertise in employee-student sexual conduct and can investigate each complaint thoroughly and fairly. And I know we're not, the recommendations were sort of guidelines, not like, "You have to do X," but it looks like that we're building internal expertise versus having a specific trained investigator? Is that...
We'll have both.
What's our model?
Our model is, so with the CERC model, there is a facilitator who is the kind of the primary, the expert in that, and will be conducting investigations, assisting schools as they roll out their CERC protocols, and providing them the support they need. And there's also the Title IX Coordinator, Director, who will do the same. So, we'll have internal experts who are doing that. But part of, also, part of what this training is, and part of what the CERC and ASMR training we're trying to do is make, bring that expertise to the building. When we, when we did the training at the beginning of October for the, each building, as you know, has identified a school compliance officer. We'll have multiple trainings for them, and they will be sort of the subject matter experts in their buildings, so that anybody from the building can turn to them and say, "So, this has happened. What's my next step? Or what should I be looking for?" So, we want to build internal expertise, as well as have then the two identified leaders of that, of those programs.
Great, so that builds capacity. Does that mean that, so I had thought, for example, so there's an incident, and the school compliance officer is like, "Yes, this should be investigated," or makes the recommendation be investigated. Are you saying then the schools-based personnel is going to do the investigation, or there's somebody here centrally that will be sort of a designated investigator?
Well, for adult, for the adult sexual misconduct, that, that's, the Title IX Coordinator works in conjunction with HR. We already have an expert group in labor and employment who conduct investigations. They are enhancing their skills at this point. They're recognizing the things that, the particular needs that they need to have when investigating these kinds of incidents. So, they take the lead in adult matters, and they work, but we've also developed a protocol for incidents like this, where it's a, it's a team effort. So, it's general counsel's office, HR, the building person to do the, to do the investigation.
Great. And we'll bring it over and let somebody else ask questions. Unless nobody has any.
So, following up on that, because I had kind of the same question, will there be outside investigators hired in any case?
There may be instances where we'll need to hire outside investigators, but I think the idea is to build the capacity, to build it internally.
And I see that the...
Training was to be completed, the modules, I guess, the training itself, by December, but has it been completed now? Is it, when will it be ready to go?
This is a large district with a lot of employees.
Yeah, but the modules themselves.
Oh, well, so, so we have, I think, I think by December, we should be able to have the building-level people trained. That's, that's my hope. We have, at least in looking at the CERC model...
Content.
Oh, the content. Oh, we have.
Content is done.
The content is done, I'm sorry.
Good. Yeah, that was my question.
Sorry.
And it will be available to not only district staff, but we're going to be looking at also our contractors and volunteers, so it's kind of broad-based.
Yes.
Great. Just double-checking.
Can I follow up on that? So, the training is required.
Mm-hmm.
How are we tracking compliance?
It's easier to track compliance with PPS staff, because we're putting it on, the training sessions on Pepper. And so, when you sign in, it tracks. We are working with IT to try to develop a tracking system, or some way to track volunteers and contractors. It's, that's going to be a little more difficult, but we've already met, met with some, looking at the volunteer piece and how we can put that into play.
Just to clarify, Pepper is our online professional development training software, so it tracks everybody for completing the exercises.
Okay. So, it tracks them.
I want to thank the team for helping me.
It's great. Do you want to try?
So, just a question about the online training. So, one of the recommendations talked about just how compelling or uncompelling it was before, and I'm wondering if you did, after staff has taken it, have you done anything to sort of assess whether users engage more with the content or retained more? I think it was like, you know, it's 80 slides into a...
So, what we did this year, in response to that, was we changed the online training program. We, we are using Safe Schools Program, because we wanted to have something that, recognizing that the other one wasn't providing as robust a training, we exchanged it for that one. The idea, what we were thinking of doing is developing our own for next school year, but to use the Safe School one this year, because we just didn't have the time to put it together.
So, you've got a packaged one that replaced the...
Yes.
The PowerPoint slides that were ADN or whatever.
I just went through it last week. It's very comprehensive. It's a good training.
So, is that like on the district website, or...
It's on the professional development Pepper.
It's on Pepper.
Site.
So, our employees have an internal ability to log on to our professional development site, and that's where the module appears. It is true, we have a more engaging set of slides. It reminds me of, I was boarding my plane last night, every airline has to share safety rules. Some have a more interesting way of doing that, so we've attempted to do that here as well.
So, is it available for non-employees at this point? No, I don't know that they can access it. It's embedded into the Pepper platform, which is why we have, we actually have a number of, we're developing PowerPoints for, again, for the volunteer site, and we have, so we have a modified...
I think that could be posted.
We can post that. The one thought was posting it on the volunteer webpage, and then also, I'm trying to remember where else we were going to post it, because people come in through different avenues.
Yeah, I guess that had been my question, I'm figuring out, beyond just employees, because the scope of the policy, you know, is more inclusive, so how, what vehicle then will they be able to access it through?
We have a standalone ASM, the Adult Sexual Misconduct PowerPoint, that we, that's been part of the in-person training, and that's the one that we have modified to, to provide to other, to volunteers and others.
So, your, I think your question is, can we make this new enhanced online training that's about 30 minutes long available to the public? And I don't see why we wouldn't. Let's definitely explore that. So, we could definitely look into that. We already have plans underway to get training easily accessible and required by contractors and volunteers. That's not, the content is getting developed, but it's not rolled out completely yet. So, I just want to reassure you, that is our very next step.
So, one of the more nuanced or complex recommendations is, "Exercise transparency and do not enter into resignation agreements that restrict disclosure of possible sexual conduct." So, the notation is completed and ongoing. So, part of this involves some of our contractual agreements, but can you just explain what's completed or what's ongoing, or...
So, we are not engaging in any, so we will still have discussions about resignation agreements, but they will not, and we are forthcoming, and the union knows that we will not...
Omit?
Right.
That information?
It's our duty.
Yeah.
And so, we are letting the employees know that as well.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Just one question, so, like, looking forward, is the online trainings, is that something that staff are going to be, like, recommended to do every year? Okay.
They're required to.
Required to do every year, okay.
So, this is sort of just a further question, and you can tell me that you already answered it, but I'm not sure I heard it. A number eight on this list requires sexual conduct prevention and identification training for PPS volunteers and contractors. It says it's, "Training and content requirements are being added to volunteer registration in schools." So, you're a parent at Glencoe, and you sign up to be a volunteer. Are you saying that that's when you get a notice, like, you've got to get a background check done and take this training? Is that...
One of the things we're thinking of doing is adding, because you get that letter from them saying you have to do, you know, it's a check-off, and one of them is, "And do the training." So, that's, that was one of the things we were contemplating, and then having on that volunteer webpage that...
So, you've done two things. If you're going to have contact with students as a parent volunteer, you're going to have had a background check, background check, and you're going to have completed the training?
Yes. That's our expectation.
We don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet.
But the target date is December 31st? Is that still a realistic...
That's doable.
Okay, great.
I would say that's doable.
Great. Courtney, do you want to go for legislation?
That's a lot of progress.
Lot of progress and a lot of work to do, so we're committed to getting it all done.
Courtney Westling, Government Relations Director. So, quick update on what, where we are with prep for 2019 on this matter. So, I think you all know that we handed out a letter back in May to all legislators, giving them a kind of a brief breakdown of what was in the Whitehurst report and what recommendations were included and why we needed them. Among the recommendations, as you well know by now, there were a couple of legislative suggestions. So, one was to adjust the definition, align the definition in statute for sexual conduct with TSPC regulation, regulatory definition. Right now, the bar is very high to substantiate a claim of sexual conduct, very high. It's a four-part test. It's tough. So, the, so that's been part of the conversation that I'm having in Salem. There's a lot of interest in that. You can see from the piece of paper that's in front of you that I handed out, there's sort of, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around a bit. I'll start by saying, we're pursuing two tracks legislatively. The first is our own bill. I am working on a concept, language, with Senator Wagner. It's not a draft yet, it's just language, just a concept, that's how things start. At the same time, Senator Roblin, who's the Senate Education Committee Chair, and also the co-chair of the Student Success Committee, he is a retired high school principal from KUSB, and he, after the Whitehurst report memo was distributed, he asked Legislative Council for an opinion on how those recommendations would interface with the, with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, or the...
Federal law.
The federal law. So, he asked for an opinion. You have that in front of you as well. It's pretty long and pretty dense, but essentially, what he wanted was to know that these recommendations were not going to fly in the face of what we were required to do by federal law. So, he has a real interest in these issues, probably because of his background, but also because he finds that it's important, as we do. So, he's pursuing his. I've outlined the fixes or the tweaks that he's trying to make to state law, to A, align with federal, and to B, make adjustments and close loopholes and improve how we do business on this matter. A lot of his interest is around TSPC and getting them more robust investigation capabilities. Right now, they have very few people investigating. These issues are not unique to PPS, we know that, and so, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make sure that they have the capacity to, capacity to look into this stuff. So, that's a big piece of it. He's also completely on board with adjusting the definition. I've run into a lot of people who are shocked, actually, that it is so hard to substantiate a claim. There are some out there that are concerned about changing the definition. That would be, our teachers' union has concerns, but I don't have a lot of specifics yet about why. The other piece around, that was recommended in the Whitehurst report that we address, or that we go lobby to address, is the TSPC investigation timeline. On average, right now, the investigations at the TSPC level take eight months. It's a really long time, and it's way too long. So, again, it goes back to staffing, so, you know, the blame is not on, all on them and their process. It's, it's a matter of people doing the work, and that's a challenge for them. So, there's a lot that goes into that, and it's political, because everything is, but there's, there's a lot of good conversation happening around all of this. We, we're dual-tracking this, because that's how you do it. You kind of throw the kitchen sink out, and you figure out what is going to pass muster and who's going to support what, and I think that what I'm learning in this process is that people are really motivated on this to make some changes. And what that eventually looks like is still, you know, to be determined, but, but it's very promising that Senator Roblin is very interested in this, that there are a lot of conversations happening among stakeholders, our partners, OSBA, COSA, others, to improve and tighten this legislation. The top piece of the handout is, those are the details that are going into the concept we're currently working on. That's being drafted. I haven't seen language yet, but it's a couple of things that are pretty low-hanging fruit, quite frankly. being drafted. I haven't seen language yet, but it's a couple of things that are pretty low-hanging fruit. Quite frankly, we, right now in statute, sexual conduct does not go beyond K-12. And we obviously have students that are less than that and older than that. So making sure that the, the student population that we serve is contained in, in that definition. And then also, as we were talking about volunteers and contractors, the, a school employee does not currently include those two. So making sure that they're included as well. So that's kind of the big picture. Happy to take questions. There'll be more as things kind of settle out, but this is the latest.
And for our viewing, viewing audience, TSPC.
Sorry, Teacher Standards and Practices Commission. They're the teacher licensing agency. And they are a fee-based only agency, which makes, that's what makes it tough for them to have enough investigators is they're, they don't have additional general fund or anything like that. That I know of. I better say that I know of because I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's right.
Okay, so is anybody willing to throw any money at this?
I'm hopeful. I know that one of the things I'm hearing from Roblin's office is that he would like to see this go through ways and means, which means it would have to have a fiscal. And I don't know what that fiscal is, but going through ways and means is, you know, that's a good goal. And I think, I think there is interest. It's a, you know, this is, it's a resource issue, just like everything else that we talk about. And I know that you're, particularly frustrated by that, Rita. We talk about it a lot.
Which is, which is why we need more revenue.
Yeah.
Just, just saying.
Totally agree.
It, it is profoundly irritating to me that on page nine, this is about the, in the, in the, the report from the Legislative Council Committee. This is on the second legislative recommendation. Second paragraph says, talking about why it takes so long for investigations to happen. Our understanding is that lack of funding for investigations has been the primary obstacle in past years, for TSPC in conducting investigations in a timely manner. Therefore, mandating an investigatory timeline may not be productive.
Kind of the wrong there.
Uh, yeah, I think so. I think therefore should be. We should have more investigators so that they can actually conform to some reasonable timeline.
That is contemplating Senator Roblin's bill.
Okay. So I think we would, some of us would be very happy to do what we can to support any requests for additional funding.
More help, the better.
Okay, my rant is over. Go ahead.
So just a clarification.
So the one pager we have here, that's the PPS concept and then the Senator Roblin's concept. So these are all actually in to the Ledge Council as?
Yes.
One big omnibus?
No.
Or?
Two separate bills with the hope that we would come up with one in the end, but leaving an option open to have, make tweaks to our own if we need it. The hope is that we would have one bill that addresses all these issues that everyone can get behind.
And a relating clause that covers them?
Exactly.
So there'd be one Senate bill potentially and one House bill and then?
Potentially.
Okay. And when do we expect? When, when did it go in?
They don't have to get, we don't have to see anything until December. We're going to see it sooner than that. I don't, I don't have a date for you, but I know that the, Ledge Council that's assigned to these, I just saw her yesterday at another meeting and I know that she's knee-deep in this issue.
No, I just really appreciate the thoroughness of the potential legislative concept and so hopefully it comes, it comes out of Legislative Council as we wanted it.
And we'll make sure that it gets in order if it's not.
And I do see where in Senator Roblin's concept, the add seven additional investigators to TSPC staff and mandate a ninety-eight timeline. I mean, that's a start.
Yeah, and I think the seven, I, I was also, there were some notes that seven is not, may not be the last number they land on.
Right.
It's, it was a starting point.
That's what I see.
I think a lot of this can be looked at as a starting point. There's going to be, conversations in the interim leading up to January. By the way, do you all remember that session does not start in February this year? It starts January twenty-second. Just a reminder, two weeks early.
It's always good to remember.
Okay.
So. One last question, I think. How are students hearing about these new processes?
I have the same question, particularly also for student, student, issues as pertains to our new policy around dating and.
That's something that we have to develop. We haven't yet. I think some of what they're getting, they'll be getting the new, educational curriculum that's being rolled out as well. So some of that will come there, but we're realizing that we need to do, that's an avenue I haven't, we haven't looked at.
Oh, you mean the health and wellness?
This, yes, the health and wellness, wellness curriculum.
So I.
Are you on that? You on that?
There also was a, a letter that went out very recently to all high school students, alerting them to resources to report concerns about sexual assault, encouraging them to, consult with resources inside their building, at the district and outside the district. So there are a number of actions happening. I think there's a lot of work, yet to go, but that's a recent direct communication to all students from the district, or all high school students, I should say, from the district. And this is eventually going to be rolled down to younger grades as well, right?
Senator, just a follow-up question on the TSPC. So I'm wondering what our general practice is, and I don't know if this is a question for Sharon Reese or not, or, the General Counsel. But when we put somebody on administrative leave and end up referring somebody to TSPC, are they generally on paid leave through the time period by which the, the TSPC investigation occurs?
Uh, that's a, it's a separate investigation, so our processes are independent or subject to.
So we may have done an investigation, made a determination. So we don't, we, we generally don't have, staff who are on paid leave, who get referred and then are in the sort of year-long queue or however long it takes to investigate that we're paying?
And so if I understood your question correctly, we refer within thirty days. And to TSPC regardless of where we are in our investigation. If it's reportable, we report it within thirty days. And that's a legal counsel assessment. And then we go through our process. We are actually likely to end our process before TSPC exits.
There may be some overlap, but we.
So I'm, so you're saying then that the likelihood that we would continue to pay somebody who, have them on paid leave, that they would still be on paid leave while there's this long TSPC investigation, that that's unlikely?
That is unlikely. Correct. Because we would have, we would have made our findings and conclusions based on our investigation and decided what to do. For example, if it resulted in termination or resulted in a return to work. So that person would then be off of paid administrative leave as TSPC continues to, move through its process.
Now, if TSPC had a speedier process, it could be. Helpful if it worked the other way around. If they were ever able to conclude an investigation before we were, that could be helpful and it could reduce our time on paid leave, but that doesn't look, I mean, likely in the near future.
But it would be helpful.
It would be.
It could happen in the near future.
Well, if we pass our bill.
Yes.
They are, but they could come up with information that proves relevant for our process.
But ours is always has a head start because of the thirty days, so.
Well, and there, so TSPC, Shonda, I mean, TSPC's practice is to actually wait until the, the school district, whether it's a sort of different school district, has completed our investigation before.
They'd be in there.
They will watch hours. So they want to know what the findings and conclusions are before they move forward.
But there may be some overlapping some of the time, you're saying.
There may be overlap. Yeah, we are required to report within thirty days. So they receive that report often, actually most of the time, before we are completed of our investigation. Yes.
Okay, so do they wait for us to be completed or just sometimes they start before we're completed?
I will, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, you go ahead.
So I will speak only to what I understand TSPC's process to be. It is my understanding from our conversations with TSPC that they, that they wait. So they have it, but what are they actively doing on it? I'm not, but I, I can't speak to that.
So they would.
Resource issue.
Wouldn't be, well, it may be a resource issue or it may be, we're just going to wait and see how this turns out. So it wouldn't exactly help us. Thank you.
So.
So in those cases where, there have been some recently where a PPS staff person resigned and like a year later, TSPC, came out with a finding, they recommend the revoking of the license. And in our new regime where we don't, with the resignation, we say what hap, whatever our finding was, you wouldn't have, there wouldn't be surprises like that in the future theoretically. If we referred somebody, they resigned and then comes out later that they revoked, that TSPC revoked a license, we're not going to have instances where we, somebody will have had a, I guess a favorable resignation or whatever that looks like. I mean, their resignation would note that it's still being.
They would still, I mean, the resignation would still be a, would be in play. Are you looking for?
Well, if their resignation was still, if, if they resigned now, it would say something like, we've referred this issue to TSPC.
I don't think the resignation would say, the resignation agreements tend not to say that. They would, they, we say that we, we follow, we follow applicable law so that if that is, if that entails a report to TSPC, that it could entail that, it could entail, a report under HB twenty-sixty-two for substantiated findings. So we keep that language in there saying we will, we will, we will uphold the law and do those things, even if you resign today.
So one of the things we're asking for in the legislation is requiring districts to complete investigations even if the employee has resigned. That's something we can just do on our own. Is that?
You don't need legislation to do that. That's just.
So is that our current practice now?
That is, we have implemented that as a practice now.
So I think, I don't know if that addresses what Julia was asking.
Was your question fully answered? I think you were wondering if there would be a situation where it could come as a surprise to a subsequent employer that, that when they finally get a finding from TSPC, which the answer should be no, because when they left our employ, they had a notation that this had been referred to TSPC, and there wasn't a, you know, sterling recommendation.
Well, and we will have completed our own investigation regardless of whether they resigned.
Right. Right.
So, and, and the results of that become part, how, how would those get communicated to another district?
Only the HB twenty-sixty-two findings, the substantiated conduct findings are, sent to other districts, other educational agencies.
So that continues to be a gap.
Okay.
And what also.
And that's, and that's one of the things we're asking to address.
Yeah, Courtney, one of the things that we have been talking, Courtney, we, we've been meeting in groups, looking at ways that we can change as well the, the, at least the reporting mechanism for HB twenty-sixty-two, which now only is a box that says you either, there's a substantiated finding or not. And we're looking at changing that to add, have you been, are you currently under investigation? Have you been under investigation? So that it provides more information to another agency rather than the, did you just have a substantiated finding, which?
With a really high standard.
Yes.
With a ridiculously high standard.
Right. So is that a change that PPS can make independently or is that going to require state action?
That's more, well.
Um, probably not.
State action, yeah.
So it will require a state action?
It's a statewide form.
Okay.
It requires state.
But there are other states that have a form that are nice and better that we've been looking at.
Right.
Washington and.
Washington, yeah. Pennsylvania both have, allow more information of investigations that may not have resulted in, substantiated findings, but still give some, some additional, I think useful information.
So we're pursuing that as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for this. This, this is a lot of work and it's, I mean, these things never happen as quickly as everyone wants, but there's a lot of work involved. So thank you. And I think we've made great progress in a relatively short time. Okay. So now moving on to the business agenda. The board will now consider the remainder of its business agenda. Yeah. Are there any changes to the business agenda?
No, we sent out the revised agenda on Friday and posted it.
Okay. So there were some changes to the one that was originally posted, but those have now been available since Friday?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion from Director Brim Edwards. Do I have a second to adopt? Okay. Seconded by Director Constam. Is there any public comment? Okay. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda?
Yes, I had a question. I think, Chief Staff Stodden is going to answer it regarding the David Roy Consulting Contract. It's a significant contract for the remainder of the year and it's built on, a previous contract and then another amendment. And given just the size of it for services, can you, explain the percentage of his time that we will be, that we anticipate we will be getting of him and, sort of what the sort of backfill purpose of, because ordinarily this would be staff work, so if you can.
I think I'll just pile my question on so you can consider them all together, even though thank you for already answering some questions about this contract. So part of the justification is to backfill for two positions that are currently open. So can you clarify if this is a not-to-exceed, contract with an expectation that it might not be used in full if those other positions are filled permanently?
I don't know exactly the answer to this because it now resides with Stephanie Cameron, who is unable to be here tonight. But let me give you some background. So, just as many areas of the agency where we still have open positions that we are trying to fill, for example, you have contractors that are working in your, in your budget office, in HR, in other areas across the agency. While we look forward to bringing full-time benefited people on our staff and we're recruiting actively for all of those positions, we still have some open. And so what David Roy is doing for us is he's been serving in a backfill capacity while we've had positions, open. We have a Public Information Officer position that's been posted and recruited once and we are now reopening it again. And we have a community engaged, Director of Community Engagement position open. And so. a community engaged, director of community engagement position open. And so, that said, David doesn't, he's not serving as our PIO, that's being managed by Harry Estev, as you know. But he is filling in, in a number of capacities. One, and since he started, it's been on sort of the culture change, internal communication, employee communication. He's been working both for communications and HR. He is on the communications team for the visioning process, which, as you know, now includes a greater community engagement component. Crisis communications, as you know, we have those often. And just communication strategy helping filling out the team. And so, the original contract started in February of 2018, and this, and then there's been, you're looking at the third amendment to it, which takes us through June of 2019. And Director Brem Edwards, David, for the most part, just works for us. He, when he first started, he had other clients, but he is very interested in working just for PPS. And so, I think, I believe he's our sole, we're his sole client.
So, just the follow-up on Director Constam's question. So even if we fill both positions, we anticipate with the vision work and some other things, that the likelihood is that he will, he could.
He could stay. If we get those positions filled, we would definitely assess, because those open vacancies are helping to pay for this contract. So we don't have resources to have it fully staffed and a contractor. So that's a, that's a call we would make at that point. We are actively recruiting and want those positions filled. But at the same time, we're very thankful that we have a really talented consultant helping us.
Great. And then, I guess, my last thing is, I'm just gonna thank Roseanne and other staff for putting together the contract renewal report form, just as a way for us to be able to clearly look at some of the details of the contract. So when we vote on them, that we're not going, necessarily having to go through ten to twenty-page contracts.
That was our inaugural launch, so if you have feedback, we would be happy to tweak it, too.
Any other comments? Okay. The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Paisler voting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any committee or conference reports?
I just wanna point out something on the business agenda that's kind of a big deal, which is the award of the construction project for the, for Lincoln High School to Hoffman Construction. So it's a big contract, and it's, was a good competitive process in terms of really being, bringing out some good capable bidders. So that's very exciting.
I have a conference report. Last week, sorry? Okay. So last week, I attended a conference with the superintendent and some of our senior administrators, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendent. It was their annual education summit. The event is designed for educators across the country to work together, to look at the current educational challenges, and to, you know, come together to discuss strategies, particularly those that impact Latinx students. And our own superintendent Guerrero was featured as part of ALAS Cohort One, which was a leadership program there. And this was the same cohort that included Reynolds' new superintendent, Dana Diaz, and the new chancellor of New York City Schools, Richard Carranza. So he's an excellent, with excellent cohort there. It was really a great conference, pulling together people, kind of specifically with lenses at Latinx students, but education in general. A lot of great presentations on a, really a broad range of topics. So it was, and there were some board members there. But it was a really interesting conference that I came away learning a lot from. So, thanks.
I wanted to, I'm sorry, did you have something?
Go ahead.
Um, to report on our equity and contracting committee for the district, which meets on a quarterly basis. So it's a really good opportunity for our internal staff to meet with contractors and prospective contractors about how are our systems working, how are we doing relative to our goals? And the news is all very good. We have policies and aspirational goals regarding contracting with minority women-owned, emerging small businesses, service-disabled veteran businesses. And we have increasingly been doing considerably better. We've, we've met our aspirational goal for, of eighteen percent for the last couple of years. And it's not just about hitting the target, it's about really developing the capacity within the contractor and subcontractor community. And it just seems to be a very open process, where our, our staff seems to be really tweaking our own systems and solicitations based on feedback from the community. So, all, all very positive. And also, I guess Dan Young left, but we continue internally to work with our prime contractors about how to enhance their relationships with minority, emerging small business subcontractors, to really broaden that part of the industry. So to me, this is really important, as we are such a huge economic driver with, you know, over a billion dollars worth of capital investment in this community right now. And we wanna be, we wanna be a good owner, and we wanna make a lasting contribution to what the workforce is in our community. So that's all very good news.
So I have a committee report from the Board Policy and Governance Committee that met this afternoon. We reviewed options for policy development process. Really appreciate the General Counsel's Office putting that together. Looks like it will allow us to create a sustainable policy development process that's current and functional for our staff. We also had a discussion on five policies that we've had a first reading for rescissions. The five policies are real estate transaction process, the public information program, teacher transfers, non-contractual grievance procedures, administrative recommendations, unemployment of relatives. And those are all being recommended for rescission and the committee today. We haven't received any public comment on, on the committee today. Is going to be recommending that at the next board meeting in November, after our twenty-one day comment period, that we have a second reading on those. We also had a discussion about two other policies that are currently in the public comment period, the first being the preservation, maintenance, and disposition of district real property. And we discussed whether there was any public, there wasn't any public comment on this, but there were, there were, there was one change added to the draft, which is on, in this policy, under sale of real property, one B in the revised version, we're gonna add the word district in front of the words needs. So the summary, the sentence will say, "A summary of factors considered in the development of the recommendation, including a market and district needs analysis." So we'll add that to the document that is currently under consideration. There was committee agreement to add that. And then, secondly, we had a discussion about an amendment that was first read at the last board meeting, and it's an amendment, its language, actually, in one of the policies is being rescinded, that now will, would be incorporated into the preservation, maintenance, and disposition of district real property. And we had a discussion about the amendment. Last, last time, we hadn't, didn't have a full discussion of the committee and a recommendation of whether we should incorporate it. And we had a fuller discussion. And we'll be recommending that the board incorporate this amendment into the policy when we have our second reading on it, which would be also at the November thirteenth meeting. The one addition we made, we had a fair amount of discussion about the amendment, and are, just given the lack of space and how precious it is, that the board having an interest in just knowing if there are leases that are entered into, that are below the delegation threshold, that we would get a quarterly report. So, a sentence we're adding to that amendment, that we can add into the posted amendment, reads, "The superintendent will provide a quarterly report to the board regarding leases signed below the delegation threshold." And that has been reviewed by the superintendent, the general counsel, and the deputy superintendent for business and operations. So that's one of the change. And then, the other policy that's out for public comment, that we discussed today, is the professional, the policy of professional conduct between staff and students. And this is another, this is a policy that was recommended, that we created, coming out of the Whitehurst Report. We hadn't received, we'd received one public comment, and then we also had a public comment today at the meeting, where there was a lengthy, or somebody who's had a long career in volunteerism, talked about sort of their perspective of the policies and some recommendations on how we might implement it. And so, and asking some good questions. So we likely will have another, another committee meeting where this is a central topic. We're expecting the public comment period again is till October 23rd. We expect additional comment. The superintendent has some questions also that he's going to pose. So that will be, I think, the topic of our meeting in November 3rd, November 1st, that we have. In addition, there were three other new policies that we briefly discussed. One related to the district performance auditor, and some modifications we may make. So that'll be a future, future committee meeting. Same thing with the student assignment to neighborhood schools, and looking at the policy by which people have a right to, or students have a right to continue to attend that school. We gotta get a new name. And also, the last piece was the field trip policy, which was, this was another recommendation that came out of the Whitehurst Report. And we had a discussion about it, and there was some information that we're looking for as a committee, just to get a better sense of what sorts, what sorts of trips currently are occurring, that are school, that are school district sanctions, and those that aren't, being clear when they're not, that the district, that they're not district-sponsored. And then, the discussion will be when they're school district-sponsored, what's the district standards and expectations. And again, this comes out of the Whitehurst Report, and will be linked also to this, to the other policy we were discussing, the professional conduct between staff and students. So that has more, that's gonna be probably another committee meeting where we have a significant discussion on it. So we'll have some, I think, five or six coming at the next, to the next board meeting, or the meeting on the thirteenth, and then some others trailing. And I wanna thank all the staff, in particular, the staff who put together the real estate property draft policy. This is going on, been going on for six months, so hopefully, we're gonna get it over the finish line soon. And then, also, Mary Kane and Liz Large for the work around the professional conduct between staff and students. So a big lift. So that's, that's the report.
Okay.
So I've been regularly attending the Madison work group for the update of Madison High School. So a couple of things there. They continue to do community outreach and communication. So there was a much bigger turnout at the first PTSA meeting at Madison, because they were making a presentation there. And they're gonna be doing outreach to the feeder school PTAs over the next coming months. Value engineering continues at pace. And with that, one of the main adjustments that they made was, they were originally gonna keep the gym structure, which had issues, and found that replacing the gym would deal with those issues and lead to some cost savings. It's also led to some engineering challenges, because it's on the side of a hill. So there's the whole, similar to Lincoln, where they ran into issues around seismic and soils. It's the same kind of challenge of, well, how do we actually build this and have a stable structure on the side of the hill? But they're working, working on that. And I think it was mentioned that, I think at OHSU, there's, they had similar issues in some of the building that they've had up on the hill there, that they're trying to learn from. Sometime in November, we should get some updated cost estimates as they're becoming much more refined. So we should be hearing more on that. And then just the sort of future planning going on. So they're already meeting around the, you know, the transition to Marshall for the two-year period. They're already planning into that. They've already brought on a number of subcontractors to engage them very, much earlier than has been the case in the, so that should help with the, making sure the subs are online in terms of meeting the deadline going forward, deadlines going forward. And also, working with facilities in terms of maintenance and making sure our maintenance staff are up to speed on the HVAC system and all, all those kind of issues going forward, so that there, there's a cohesive whole going forward. So, good stuff. Great work by staff.
I just wanna give an update on the trip that I am taking next week, taking part in the Council of Great City Schools Student Town Hall in Baltimore. Yeah. We had a conference call with all the other students about a week ago, just going over the details of the event. And I actually learned that I'm gonna be able to meet with some students, oh, man, it's a lot, be able to meet with some students that survived the Stoneman Douglas shooting in Parkland, Florida. So they're gonna be taking part in the discussion as long, as long, or along with me. And some of the topics we're gonna be covering, you know, anywhere from climate change to student activism, student voice, school climates, and equity in school districts. So I have to say, I'm the only student that's representing the West Coast, so I'd like, I'm really excited about that.
[applause]
Yeah. So I'm really excited to meet these other students, especially the students who had to, that had to live through this tragedy in Florida. But I think we're gonna, I'm gonna get a lot of good information from this meeting, and bring a lot to it, too. So, really excited.
Great. Okay. Any other reports, comments? Okay.
The only other committee, Director Moore and I have been on the core, core team for the vision, and we're going into our work session on that, so.
Right.
Stay tuned.
Okay. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on?
November 13th.
November 13th. And immediately following this meeting, we are having a work session on the visioning process. So, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.